We were going to be applying a final word protocol. So one of the things that we had emailed out was for everyone to choose a significant passage from chapter three of the Courageous Conversation book. Was everyone able to do that, all the board members? So we will just be rolling with that. Just as a general overview of how I'm approaching this, I'm doing work with the board, simultaneously doing work with our district leadership team and with the cabinet team, and really focused on a few central questions. The first question, which we talked about previously, was how are we defining equity in the Akama School District so that when we're using that word, we're meaning the same thing? Right now, since I have equity in my title, I get to be the definer, and we're going to work on the policy together language that will define it as a district. But right now, we're kind of running with the definition that I've been using. Additionally, why do we lead and center race in our equity conversations and work? Race is going to be a significant emphasis very early on. It's going to get to the point that people are like, does this guy talk about anything other than race? But really, I'm trying to help folks to understand why it's important for us to lead and center that in our equity conversations. And that's why this chapter was really important. And this work is particularly important for our board as the community starts to become more invested in this topic, to have a strong firm foundation and grounding in why it is that we are leading and centering race, although we're not ending there. We're, it's a starting point and not a finish. Then also thinking about what are some of the things that gets in the way of productive dialogue about issues of race and equity? What trips us up when we're trying to have these conversations? How can we create the conditions for meaningful cross-racial dialogue about race and equity? And once we have kind of really immersed ourselves and have a good understanding of how to have these conversations and are ready and confident in leading and centering race, then what does it look like as we move from conversation to action? So for this protocol, it's looking for each person to share a significant idea from the text, where you found it, what was significant to you about it. Maybe three minutes for the first person to share their passage, and then one minute for each other person to comment on what the original presenter said, either expanding on the idea, pushing back on the idea if you have a different perspective on the passes that they shared, or to identify a question or wondering that you have about what the original speaker said. And then after everyone has had the opportunity to respond, the original person will have the final word. And then once we've gone through all five board members, if there's something really important from the text that I think we didn't look at, then I'll bring that up, and then we will just call that an end of our protocol. So how much time do we have for this? I thought I just heard four, what was the ending time?
Four twenty.
Okay, so we should have plenty of time to go through the protocol with all people. So who would be interested in sharing your passage first?
Hi, Will.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, my favorite passage came on page fifty-seven. And it was a quote from Oprah Winfrey. And the first part of the quote says that racism is the day-to-day wearing down of the spirit. And my favorite part of the quote is the second line, which is anti-racism is the day-to-day going after the little things. And I think that one of the terms that's used in the explaining paragraph talks about microaggressions, and that we often aren't aware of those kinds of things when they occur in the educational setting or in any setting. And so that one of our responsibilities as educators is to be listening for and hearing them when they emerge out of our mouths, but also when they come out of the mouths of students and staff, and finding gentle but firm ways to confront microaggressions and eliminate them from our interactions with folks.
Thank you. So we want to take, have each board member take one minute and respond to the passage that he shared and/or what he had to say about it. So how about Raymond?
Sure. I know that just talking from, you know, from personal experience passing the past that, you know, when a person does experience racism, that it does wear on you, right? It, you motivate, kind of sucks out your motivation, you're not encouraged, you know, just kind of don't see any hope for our future. Why try, right? If the system is stacked against you and so forth. So that's what comes to mind, and I, in terms of what she's saying there, that it wears on you, you know, on a daily basis. And if you're not able to overcome that, then the consequences are often negative.
Yeah, thank you. Martha?
I recalled a conversation that I was a part of over the weekend where a person of color came to speak to a group that I was zooming with. And this is, this person is, has a pretty strong will and is pretty fierce. And one of the Caucasians in the group after this person left mentioned that she was a tiger because she was so fierce. And another person of color in the group called her out on that because the connotation, calling, calling an Asian woman a tiger is not a nice connotation. And, you know, the Caucasian woman wasn't aware of that and immediately apologized and said she didn't mean, didn't mean any harm by it. But it, when I read this paragraph again this weekend, that, that passage stuck with me, and I recalled that conversation.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, I, I think Norm for picking that passage because this is something that me as an African-American male have had to deal with all my life is the day-to-day wearing down, trying to explain who I am and what I'm about. And, you know, not putting me in a, in a box of what they see versus who I am. And it wears you down. And I, I can understand what Martha's talking about, how when you get in a group of white Caucasians and you may be one or two minorities, and they say something out of character to describe something, and it sometimes comes from ignorance and not knowing or not realizing what they're saying, and wonder why we get on a defensive, you know, because we had to go through this so much. And it's, it's just important to be conscious of, of what you're saying and think about what you're going to say before you say it. And that's, that's part of that microaggression, knowing it can weigh you down, it can, it can be a burden, but you know who you are, and you want to have your truth spoken, and you speak your truth. And it's, it's not about sympathy, it's about empathy, for me. And Norm, I thank you for picking that because that was like my fourth one. I mean, I love the whole book, you know? But that whole chapter, but that's, I understand. And, you know, it's, it's good to hear that we are having this conversation, and it's bringing us out, out of our comfort zone and to understand who we are as, as human beings. And, and this is one that they can work for us, I feel.
Yeah. Well, and there's, there's another side to the microaggression thing.
Whoa, 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 Norm.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll cut back in, I'll comment again later. Just Don sparked a thought in me.
That's why you get the final word. Grazie.
Thanks, yeah. You know, the, the term, terms, wearing down really struck me with that. And, you know, like everyone has said, it's, you know, little microaggressions do wear on you, and it's, I'm still, I don't know why I'm surprised, but I'm still surprised at how common this wearing down process is, just day-to-day little microaggressions. They just kind of tear your spirit every day. And I had a meal with a couple of coworkers, they were new, young professional people of color, and they have already had so many little experiences at work, at different places they, they've worked, that were just little microaggressions. And it's just that little, you know, it just tears away at your spirit little by little, and it just made me really sad that as, as new as they are in, in the professional world, they, they already have so many little examples to share. And so the terms wearing down is, it's, it's, it's very, very true and accurate.
Thanks. Okay, Norm? You got the final word.
Okay. Did everybody get their turn? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Now, the, the thing that, that sometimes happens with microaggressions too, that is sometimes they're intended as compliments in a way, but they, they put people on the spot. And an example, Don and Marcus might even have experienced this. If you're an African-American student and you're sitting in a classroom of white students, and they're having a discussion maybe about racism or slavery, and so the teacher immediately focuses on you and says, what are your thoughts about that? As though you have all the expertise on that and nobody else can speak to that. And it, it puts kids on the spot sometimes. And so I think it's important, and it happens in corporations too. So for example, the African-American vice president of the corporation gets to do, well, you get assigned to do the diversity work. And so they're like, it's not the work for all of us to be, become experts in diversity and to work in it.
Yeah. One of the interesting things that I did when I was an administrator in Bellevue was they would take us on equity walks to different schools. And it might be something cool that we could do with the board. But we would do an equity walk, and they would give us the pictures and names of four or five kids in a classroom that we were going to be focusing on when we went in the classroom. But the teacher and nobody else would know who we were there to watch, and we would see kind of the experience. And that thing around slavery, we happened to go in, and it was a conversation on slavery, and that exact thing happened to where the kids who were being focused on were kids just because of the color of their skin, it seemed like. And the teacher was actually offering a justification for slavery as an economic. We were totally mortified looking at the experience of these specific kids in class at that specific time. It was a really interesting experience. So thank you for that. We're going to go to now, so Raymond will share his passage, and they will do the same thing, and each person will have a minute to respond to the passage that Raymond shared.
Thank you. Yes, there's a passage on, it's on page forty-nine. And I've been struggling with this all weekend. So it says, no quote, "Recognizing that race is a significant factor impacting achievement requires that educators establish common understanding around racial issues. Too often, however, it seems that educators are reluctant to develop such understanding and instead blame the students themselves for the racial academic achievement gaps." So if you read, I mean, just on the surface of that, it's blaming educators, right, really, for the racial disparities in academic achievement. And so I, I take that a little further, and I think, well, I'm on the board, I've been on the board for twelve, thirteen, fourteen years, right? And I guess you can classify me as an educator. And so, and as an, as a board member, we, I've been part of that process of blaming the external factors, right? Poverty, socioeconomic status, you know, trauma, you know, limited access, you know, social services, that type of stuff, living in poorer neighborhoods, you know? We talked about, we advocate for funding at state level, federal level, you know, we talked about levies and bonds and property taxes and all those types of things, you know, local, state, and federal policies is all contributing to this, this, these disparities in academic achievements. So, you know, I go back and forth, do we, are we blaming the teachers? Is the author blaming the teachers or the educators? If so, I, I'm to blame as well, you know? But I don't know. On the other side, I don't know if there's one person or group of individuals yet can be assigned a blame for the disparities. So I kind of go back and forth. And so, has the board perpetuated racism in the district over the last twelve years? That's my question to myself, I guess, and I'll, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Martha?
I know that we've had these discussions about factors and how things factor into addressing the issues of the whole child. I don't, I don't necessarily see them as assigning blame, but I see them as factors that address elements of what the, what the students might be, or how these students might be doing in school. So I guess, I guess I, I guess I wouldn't see it as blame, and maybe, maybe that's a failure on my part. But I have heard, not recently, but I have heard educators say, well, these kids can't learn to their potential. And that bothers me a lot. It bothers me a lot because I think that truly is assigning blame when you just say these kids. And you just automatically, someone automatically makes the assumption that, that there's, that these students are somehow less than because of the, the color of their skin or their socioeconomic status, or any other factor that might be influencing their lives. And so they end up blaming the child rather than the factor.
Thank you. Don?
You know, Martha, that's, that's a very good insight on this because a lot of times you hear students of color say, well, this teacher is saying this to me, but they don't really know me, they don't understand me. And majority of the time, it's, it's true that the teacher does not understand the kid, and it's not the kids, just because they come, that just because they're living in poverty doesn't mean that they can't learn. Is, is it that you are trying to, what are you trying to do to teach them? What do you, what tools are you using to give them to be productive, to close that, that, that achievement gap? Raymond and I had a discussion earlier today about, about this very thing, that where he was stuck. And I, and I gave him some analogies of how I grew up in Louisiana from a middle-class family. My father was fortunate to put me and my sister through private school, but I had cousins that went to public school. And even in a public school at that, in the sixties, it was segregation, and they had teachers look like them. But when it integrated, that's when the problems started. And they start using that, that piece, oh, you, you, you can't learn because, because of your skin color, because of where you come from, the area city you live in. But it was not true. Because some of them who was told that they could never achieve, that they could never learn, or doctors, or professionals, you know? And, and that's, you know, that's something, sometime it is the educator's fault because they are stereotyping the kid or judging the kid because of where the economic, social background is. And, and this is, this is one of them. And I have something that I want to talk about that goes with Norm and what Raymond just picked. But that's my piece on it.
Yeah, thank you. Graciela?
Yeah, so my initial thoughts, you know, is not to spend time thinking about blame and where that lies. I think my immediate thought is how do we get, you know, however many employees we have to two thousand, I think maybe, employees to, to, to recognize, I guess, that race is a, you know, significant impact, has a significant impact on students, on, on, on achievement gaps. So it's a huge, you know, it's like moving the, I guess I don't want to say the Titanic because that's in a negative connotation, but how, how do you get a ship that's moving in one direction to, and, and it, maybe it is and maybe it's not, but I think just it's important to recognize that race is a huge impact, it is a huge factor. And how, how do you get two thousand people to say, you know, we acknowledge that, that is an impact? And I think just that acknowledgement is a starting point, and we can figure out how to, you know, where, where to go from there. So my immediate goes to how do we get, you know, two thousand people to kind of move in that direction to make that, that acknowledgement?
Thank you. Norman?
Hi. Didn't have my mic on. Oh, Marcus, call me Norm, please.
Oh, Norm, okay.
Anyway, only my mother calls me Norman. And she's not with us anymore.
Only if you break protocol, then I'll call you.
Anyway, I, when I was thinking about the, that passage in the comments, you know, it's really easy to latch on to what deficiencies might occur in a kid's life in terms of their experiences, or their parents' education, or parent attitudes, or the attitudes kids bring, and just write them off because of that. And my approach as a, most of my career's been a counselor, and my, most of my theory after years has been what's called solution-focused. And so I think really we have to look at what's working and what isn't, and find that it's, it's the imperative of all of us as educators in working with kids is to find out if it's working or not. And if it's not working, then we need to keep looking for something that does. Or if it works a little bit, then we need to expand that strategy or that technique or build on that relationship. And Don hit that too. It's about relationships and learning how to make relationships with kids and, and never writing them off, and never allowing a kid's past experience to help us create limitations for that kid. And it's the same old stereotype you, you know, you see always in, in movies. I hate the way movies treat school counselors and school vice principals because they're always painted as idiots that just put kids in boxes and, and, and never really relate well. And, and of course, that's a stereotype. And, and I really think it's important to, to knock down assumptions about kids and really work at building relationships and find strengths.
Thank you. Then Raymond, you got the final word.
Sure. So this is, this is what I kind of heard. I kind of heard race and culture being kind of major factors from my board, board members. I, and so the author here is saying that race is a significant factor. So that's where I'm, I'm kind of dealing with that as well. So, you know, as human beings, we tend to look at the outer appearance. People of color do, we all do that. And, and if we're able to get past that and not develop stereotypes and get to know that individual, their culture, then I think that's where we can be better educators and so forth. So I'm going to continue to struggle with this one, and hopefully after our study sessions, I can have a, a better answer. Thank you, Dr. Pritchard.
Thank you. Martha, you got a passage to share with us?
I do. My passage is on page fifty, and it's the first paragraph in establishing common language around race.
Okay.
Says, "Developing and using common language in conversation about race helps establish critical understanding around how racial issues impact schooling. It is not to suggest that a single definition is available, or even that one must be embraced." The author says, "I do, however, believe it is important that I provide a clear understanding of the meaning I intend when I use racial terminology." And I think it's important for all of us as we start into this process, and for district staff, as they start into this process, to have a common understanding of terms. We all have our own understanding of what it, a term might mean to us, but what, what my understanding of a term might be may be completely different than Graciela's or Normans, or Norm's, or Raymond's, or Don's. We all, we may have five different understandings of terms, but we can't come to a common agreement about things if we're working from five different perspectives. So I think it's important to establish a common definition or common understanding of what we mean when we say, use certain terms.
Thank you. Don?
I like, I like the way Martha put that, is that we do need a common language when we talk about race because each individual may have a different understanding of what race means to them. And once we get that out and get to know one another, build that relationship, then we can come and say, okay, this is the terminology, terminology we want to use. And it's the same thing with the teachers. We got to have the same message for them as well as for ourselves. And then once we get that terminology down, then, and you hear it enough and you repeat it enough, then it can opens, you can stretch your tent open, and then you can receive the information that you need and learn how to work with the various cultures within the school system. And that's a, that's a real good one. I like that one.
Thank you. Graciela?
I think that passage makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, race is a, a difficult subject for a lot of people to talk about. And if you don't have a common understanding, common agreement on, you know, terminology that you're using and, and what it means, I think that just can make that discussion even more difficult. And it's kind of, it's, it's having misunderstandings or when you don't have those common definitions, it's, it's unnecessary noise in that discussion. Whereas you just clarify it upfront, you don't have to worry about that, you know, everyone's on the same page, and you can just move forward in the conversation.
Norm?
I pretty much agree with what's been said, and I also think that it comes back to that concept of assumptions and avoid making assumptions about what people mean when they use a certain word, and to be sure to clarify that so that we are talking the same language.
Raymond?
Yes, so I agree with that. We need to have a common language so we can be able to address those issues related to racism. You know, within a Latino community, we tend to mix race and nationality. And so, you know, that, so that's, I mean, we got to have some common terminology within the district and then out to the community as well, right? What's interesting is that Latinos or people of Latin American descent, Mexican, Hispanic, whatever, if you use the current categorization of race, then Latinos would be white, which a lot of people don't actually realize or claim, right? So it's just interesting that person, people who are white are discriminating or prejudiced or racist against other people who are categorized as white. So it's just kind of ironic to me.
And Martha, you got the final word?
I'm gonna try to talk between security alerts here. I don't know, I don't know that I have anything to add. I just, I'm appreciative of the rest of the board recognizing that we do have a need to, to reach a common understanding on, on, on terms and definitions of words. And I expect that that's, that that may also be the case. And I expect that that's, that that may also be the case with staff. It may be difficult to reach a common understanding amongst 2,000 people, but I think it's worth the conversation.
Thank you. Okay, Dawn?
All right, thank you. You know, at, at listening to Norm, Raymond and Martha, they were, they went deep into the book. But something that still sticks with me is on page 37 where it talks about education for all students. And it says, "To achieve this aim, educators, families and community leaders must embrace the motto that is included in the pledge as we ask our students to repeat each morning with liberty and justice for all. If we truly want liberty and justice for everyone, we all must work towards obtaining equity. People of color must continue to draw individual and institutional attention to racial inequities and demand racial equity. As recipients of range, of racial advantage, white people must embrace their responsibility to challenge the awarding and acceptance of privilege." And that goes with what we, what we've been talking about. And for me, that means that we have to come and look at each individual, at each person as who they are, as a human being, and respect that and, and receive that with how they are feeling and what they are thinking and grow from there. And I think Martha, that's how we get to that, that, that word, the words that we need, what, what we're gonna put out there? How are we gonna bring this together? And, and how are we as a board are willing to come outside of our conference halls and to get uncomfortable? Me and Raymond had a conversation today and, and we were talking about, he shared with me his, his ancestry history. And I shared with him mine. And we have so much similarities, right? And, and it worked. And, and, and hearing this conversation is opening my eyes to, 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 to Norm, to Martha and to Graciela about where we are and how we can come together and, and wanting to do that. That's, you know, that's where we are now. We want to do this and we mean we want to do it. And we're going to come up with those words and we're going to use, you know, that, that microaggression in a positive way to reveal to the 2,000 workers, teachers and administrators that this is possible to achieve. And, and, and we talked about, your kids did it today when they did the pledge allegiance. And that's why I went back to this one. And, and I think if we look at it like that, it'll work.
You know, when I heard Dawn read that passage, it kind, it kind of makes me sad and frustrated because this country has all of the laws it needs, right? There's equity laws, there, I mean, there's, you know, Civil Rights Act of 1964, there's, there's all of these things in place already. Like we, we should not have to be fighting these things still. And it just, you know, this country continually doesn't do the right thing. And it's, you know, then we need, you know, more laws to try and control, you know, the process because people just aren't doing the right thing. Or if they did, we wouldn't be here talking about this because the laws are all there. Just, so it's just frustrating that it's, you know, all these years later and we're, you know, and you go backwards so much too, you know? And it's just, it gets frustrating and it makes me sad.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have a lot to add here. I just, I kind of just want to agree with, with what's been said so far. And that, that it is, it's, I think, I think Graciela hit on that is it's, no matter what we put in place, it's a continuous effort. And laws alone don't make it keep happening. It's a continual self-examination and examination of our systems and continual working toward that ideal. And we can see how quickly some of that can be stripped away if the wrong people get into positions of power. And in a sense, in a little local sense, we're in a position of power. And so I think it's important for us to use the power we do have to continue to work on these issues.
Raymond?
Yes, what comes to mind for me is I think we just need to develop that thought that we all belong to the human race, right? And that's what I think the, the, that statement was referring to. And even the Declaration of Independence, that we were all created equal, right? And we have, we have the right to what was an unannable rights to pursue our happiness, liberty, right? Life, liberty and pursuit of happiness. So I think if we all can understand that, and I think we can make some great strides. However, I do say, you know, I can compare when I grew up back in the, in the seventies, eighties, racism was, was, was worse back then. And I think we've made some strides. And we're not all the way there, but we've made some great strides. My, my sons, my nephews and nieces haven't had to endure what some of us have had to endure. And I think we've gotten better, we've made some progress, but there's still a lot more to go.
Martha?
Um, that was one of my passages as well. I had several because I didn't want to duplicate anybody else's. So I picked several as I went through the book. But when I read that, I thought, well, that's why we're here. That's why we volunteer our time as school directors to make sure that our community provides the best education possible for its students. And Norm, Norm's right. We are local leaders. We are the ones who can make, can affect change at the local level. We can also affect change at the state level. And if we all work together with some of the rest of our colleagues, we can affect change at the national level. But you have to start locally in order to, to, in order to accomplish anything. And that's one of the reasons why I'm on the school board is to make sure that we have the strongest education system possible for the students in Yakima. And I think that's why we're all here. That's why we tend to work so well together because we have common goals.
Thank you. Dawn, you got the final word? If you can do it quick so we can get the last round through?
Man, you know, you don't give a preacher the mic if there were final word.
I know you said say.
Hold on, don't dig into my time. I agree with, with, with all my colleagues said and with Graciela said is so riveting and so true in this present day and age. And like I shared with Raymond earlier today, I'm more scared now than I was in the sixties. But there is hope. And when you look at it as human beings, we all have this thing. This is why we serve because we want to give our students a better chance at life and to achieve the, the educational goals. And that's where it starts with us first. Martha, you right. Norm, you right. It starts with us as a board and, and coming together and making sure that we have the policies and, and everything in place that these kids and their families can achieve greatness. And that's what it's about. And I thank you guys because y'all had me crying. If y'all noticed, I was wiping my eyes because to hear that, it made my heart glad and joy, full of joy to know that we're on the same page. Although we come from different backgrounds, but we're on the same page. We have the same goals for not only our district, but for our students in our community. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Graciela, what's your passage?
So I had a hard time picking one package. At the very end of the chapter, the auto, racial autobiography, part one, that whole autobiography was just really meaningful to me. And I identified with so many of the experiences that the writer wrote about. It's the, the one that I'll talk about is, is his, his teacher, his first white teacher, Mrs. Finnegan. And, you know, she, she was moved to that school and along with a bunch of other white teachers and all the other teachers left. And she hung in there and did the hard work, even though it was really uncomfortable for her. And, you know, the kids were maybe not super nice to her. And, you know, she, you know, cried and, you know, but, but, but she stuck in there and, and learned and became a, a, a really good teacher. And, you know, thought it was neat when the author's mother, you know, refers to her as Sister Finnegan because she had made such an impact on their family and, and the other students there. And so, you know, kudos to Mrs. Finnegan. That's really hard work to do, to just hang in there and, and put the work in and, and learn and know that you have some limitations and that, you know, you want to do better and you want to, you know, do right by the students. That was just really impactful to me.
Thank you. So I'm not going to do the round on that. I'm just going to wrap this up so I can honor the time commitment. But I want to thank you all for what you shared. I'm happy that this session was you talking and not me. The thing that I would just add on to this is we need you to keep this commitment to centering a conversation about race. And we need you to have it as an expectation that we are having conversations about race. Because when, we need that cover as leaders in the system, especially the superintendent who's saying this in expectation. If we look through the chapter, we see that there are examples of the achievement gap being a racial gap. Even within different, within the same level of economics, we see racial disparities in the same income level. And we use that term socioeconomic, it talks about that. But we oftentimes, when we say socioeconomic, we leave the socio out of our conversation. And so we have to be willing to discuss race because that's the conversation that we most want to avoid. Even today, on this Indigenous Peoples' Day that the president wrote a proclamation saying that we should not be talking about the negative aspects of the Columbus legacy. And as school, as, as school systems and school teachers, right? When we leave out those stories and we leave out that perspective, we're, we're writing perspectives and narratives out of our curriculum and leaving voices of people who see things through a different lens out. I started comparing Trump's proclamation of Columbus Day to Obama's proclamation of Columbus Day. And I would encourage you to look at them and compare the way that they talk about. They both declared a holiday for Columbus, but they talk about it very different ways. And as school leaders, we have to hold the line and say, it's important that all of our students' perspectives are represented, that all of them are, are valued and that we're having this. And we have to be willing to look in a real way at how are we serving or not serving all of our students? And that includes through, through a lens of race. And so I thank you for the discussion that you've had today. I hope that you will keep this because we definitely will need that commitment from the top all the way down, and you're at the top. And so thank you for this time. And we will skip over chapter four. But for our next session, if you can be in chapter five, that would be most excellent because that's where, where we want to be is the, chapter five is that first condition.
Thank you, Marcus. Director Navarro?
Did you have any comments? I know we left you out of the conversation. I want to give you just a few seconds.
Yeah, I have a lot of comments, but I'll condense. And how, how pleased I am with the example and the modeling of our school board, just pretty much what Marcus shared about starting at the top and really setting the tone for leadership for the community and for the entire district. So thank you to each of you as board members for engaging in this conversation.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Pippleton. Appreciate your facilitating this. And it's a great conversation, great start. And we'll look, I'm, I'm sure I speak behalf of the board that we're looking forward to our next, next session. So thank you so much.